Good evening and welcome to the public forum with the candidates for the Bismarck City Commission. I am Kimberly Nguyen with the League of Women Voters and I will be your moderator. This candidate forum has been organized by the League of Women Voters of Bismarck Mandan and is cosponsored by the Bismarck Tribune and Dakota Media Access. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that promotes the informed participation of all citizens in their government. The League does not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. There are four candidates running for election for two open seats on the Bismarck City Commission, and all four have joined us here tonight. They are Sean Oban, Nolan Canright, Steve Markort, and Peril Grossman. The audience here tonight, Thursday, May 12th, is invited to submit questions on the index cards provided, and viewers and listeners may phone or text in questions for the candidates. The number to call is (355) 1312, or texts may be sent to BMLWV to (22333), as shown on the screen. This is intended to be a respectful exchange of ideas. Our purpose this evening is to provide voters with information about the candidates and their positions on issues that affect the people of Bismarck. Now, let's meet our candidates. You will each have one minute to tell us why you are seeking election to the Bismarck City Commission, and let us start with Mr. Oban.
All right. My name is Sean Oban. I am a forty-year resident of Bismarck. My family moved here when I was pretty small, and so in my time, I went through all of the Bismarck Public Schools, Riverside Walter, and a graduate of Bismarck High School. In my time, in my career, I've had the opportunity to be an elementary school principal, which I'm currently doing, a teacher. I also owned a business downtown about thirteen years ago, as well as a musician. And the reason that I'm running is pretty simple. I love Bismarck. I've never left Bismarck, even after graduating high school, when a lot of other people would move out and go to different places, I always wanted to stay. The reason that I'm running is that I want to be a strong quality-of-life advocate for the young people that are in Bismarck, including some of the groups that are sometimes not heard. So I am a proven leader in my experience as an elementary school principal, as well as in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Canright?
Well, my name is Nolan Canright, and first of all, Kim, thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, the Bismarck Tribune, and also Dakota Media Access for hosting this. Furthermore, thank you out in the audience for coming. This is very important. Thank you for you at home that are watching this and listening on the radio. We have extremely important decisions coming up in Bismarck. That's why I am running. I'm a former city employee of eleven years at the Bismarck Police Department. I moved up to the rank of sergeant. I was an acting lieutenant for a short time. Before that, I worked for a local television station. Before that, I did odds and ends. I worked as a cook. I worked as a bartender. I worked at a hardware store. Currently, I'm working for an energy company as a consultant. I came up to Bismarck, played football at the University of Mary, where I obtained an undergrad in communications and also a master's in business. So we're going to have a lively discussion tonight, and I truly, truly hope you out there watching hear what you need to hear to make an informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Markort?
Thank you, Kim. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and everyone that helped put this on. I'm running for reelection to the Bismarck City Commission to continue to be the voice for the citizens of Bismarck. I'm currently on the City Commission, and I have been an elected official for ten years. In my elected capacities, my main focus has been communication with the public and listening to those citizens and their concerns. My voting record shows this consistency, along with being involved with many community forums to get input from those same citizens. I moved up into Bismarck in 1989 with the School of Bismarck State College. I raised my family here, and want to make sure that our city stays safe, but we have growing pains that we need to work through. And with me already being on the City Commission, I want to keep moving forward with the position that I have and to continue with progress that we're working on.
Thank you. And Mr. Grossman?
Thank you, Peril Grossman, and thank you to the sponsors. As the Commission's Vice President, I want to continue my work with the Bismarck citizens, the business community, the parks, school district, the colleges, the artistic community, and making Bismarck a better place to live and following our city's strategic plan. As the Finance Commissioner for this past eight years, I successfully worked with a $200 million budget each year to decrease the property tax mills, utilize existing resources more wisely, and realign our spending priorities. As the Public Safety Commissioner, I'm engaged in public safety daily, making it the city's first priority with comprehensive planning and the addition of substantial police officers and firefighters in an affordable manner to meet our increase in public safety demands. I'm not a single-issue candidate. I want to continue to pass responsible city ordinances like implementing curbside recycling and the neighborhood parks and green space. I want to tackle orderly growth and affordable housing. I want to ensure continued flood protection that started with the 2011 flood event. With six years on the Bismarck School Board and eight years on the City Commission, I've demonstrated my passion for this community and commitment to our children and adults both. Thank you.
Thank you, each of you, for being here tonight. And now we'll move on to the questions developed by members of the League of Women Voters, the Bismarck Tribune, our in-house audience, and viewers at home. For our audience here to submit a question, please use the index cards provided. Viewers may submit questions tonight, Thursday, May 12th, by phone at (355) 1312, or by sending a text to BMLWV to (22333). Candidates have not been given advance copies of the questions, and each candidate will have sixty seconds to respond. Please comply with our time restrictions so we can get to as many questions as possible tonight. Our timer will let you know when you are down to thirty seconds, then ten seconds, and stop. I want to start with one question that was developed by the League and has already also been submitted by many members of our audience this evening. We will start with you, Mr. Canright. Do you support the use of tax increment financing and renaissance for development in downtown Bismarck, and why or why not?
I do not, and this is a great topic to start with. I want to make it clear that I don't blame any businesses that have taken any type of financing or have used any type of incentives. It's not the businesses. It's smart business. It's the policy behind it, and the policymakers behind the policy. When I file for taxes, I want every deduction possible. I don't know about you, but I'm sure everybody in the room's in the same boat, so I don't blame businesses. We have a TIF district that's been in place before I was born, 1979, okay? We're continuing on with the same policies from 1979. We have a Renaissance Zone that's been in place for fifteen years, or they just asked for an extension. When do we end this? Our downtown properties are starting to increase in value. That was the goal. Where does it end, and when do we start gathering property tax from our whole community so we could start moving forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Markort?
Basically, you know, that's one of the topics that we've discussed at the table, of course. I had voted no on Renaissance Zone. I had voted no on TIF, and I voted no on the new TIF for Five South. Basically, for the same reasons that Mr. Canright said. You know, I think that on the Renaissance Zone, being the most current, and I know the mayor was speaking on KFGO today about it, basically, we put a sunset on there to be done in fifteen years. Granted, the Renaissance Zone has done a tremendous job for downtown in the past, but I think it's something that needs to come to an end. I think that our downtown's growth has spurred new businesses to be able to come in without using those particular benefits. I would like to see it, you know, just go away. It wasn't that by the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grossman?
Yes, I fully support the Renaissance Zone and the use of the TIF, and the laws are in place to end those within those fifteen years. I think a cornerstone of my community service has been economic development, and I think the Renaissance Zone in particular has contributed substantially to that. I look at the 119 projects. I look at jumping or increasing our estimated building value from 25 million to 65 million. I look at the private investment, 52 million. I look at 465 FTEs, new businesses, fifty new businesses. I look at what this brings into our community, the young people, and the people here who want a vibrant community, and I think the downtown is a touchstone of that, so I support those programs.
Thank you. And Mr. Oban?
All righty. I had started a business in downtown Bismarck in 2003, and it was right at the very beginning of the Renaissance Zone, and the business ended up moving because downtown wasn't active. And so if the question is, for one, if the Renaissance Zone is working, I would make the argument that it is working. In fact, downtown is a completely different place than it was before. And why is downtown development important? I think of two people. I think of my daughter Jasmine, who's, you know, recent graduate or going to be graduating soon, and she enjoys the downtown development of being able to go downtown. And then I have my mother, who lives down south, who's probably not going to run around downtown. However, she will reap the benefits of a downtown that's development, because if you look at the research and if you look at the numbers, no area of town creates as much income for a city than a downtown area. And so it is in all of our best interest for the downtown to be developed. As far as the TIF district goes, in ten seconds, am I out of time? TIF district, you know, I think the one that's currently in place needs to be looked at, but I think that we need to be real careful to say that a TIF district is bad. It's a matter of how you implement it. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. The city needs to address existing and new infrastructure needs. Several sources of revenue have been cited to fund improvements. What sources of revenue do you suggest tapping? Mr. Markort?
Again, at the Commission table, that's something we have discussed, and I don't think we've fully had come to decide how we're going to do that. I think what we need to do is we need to find out what the citizens want. We need to be able to visit with our community and see how, you know, what they expect, what services are they looking for, you know, this being the infrastructure, and how we're going to pay for it. I know right now there is a one-cent sales tax. That is a possibility that we're holding off until November. I don't think that is the right way to go. And to be able to look at different ideas and different options. There's quite a few on the table, but I think we need to visit with the powers that be as far as on the financing side, if there's different options that we need to go with. So it's a tough question. There is no right answer yet.
Thank you. Mr. Grossman?
Thank you. First, I oppose any sales tax increase, any property tax increase, or any fees increase, and I disagree with the proposed figure of $230 million. I think we can knock off 100 million right off the top with the 66th Street project. The North Dakota Department of Transportation has not approved those particular projects, so we're way ahead of it. So I don't necessarily agree that that's the actual amount that we need to do. So I think what we need to do is have a community task force, prioritize the projects that need to be done, get some consensus on that, and then we need to budget it, just like we do as homeowners when we manage our checkbooks. We, as city commissioners, as a city, have to do the same thing. We have to implement and pay for the projects that we can afford.
Thank you. Mr. Oban?
All right. I've spent some time in the school district as part of our budget committee, and I think sometimes it takes a new set of eyes to take a look at the city budget, to see where we're spending our money, and see if there are some changes or different things that we can do. Sometimes when you've been ingrained in looking at the same budget, sometimes it helps to have somebody new take a look at it.
Thank you. Mr. Canright?
Well, I have the whole list of the road projects here, and I've been looking at it, and there's many, many, many road projects here that could wait. I don't agree with raising any tax, sales, property, none of it. I truly believe we have a revenue problem, and we have somewhat of a spending problem. Going back to the TIF district, I don't understand how we purchased the building where Public Health sits for 1.85 million, put additional 1.1 million into it from a TIF fund, and now we're looking at selling it for 2 million. There's a loss of a million dollars right there. Again, we have a revenue and a spending problem, and we do need to come together, and we do need to start looking at things and looking at them wisely, because the City Commission, we're not investment banks. We're not bankers. We're entrusted to use the public's money and make good decisions. And the public, they're not piggy banks. We can't just shake them upside down and take more money from them. So that's just one of many examples I've had here where we could start saving money. I want to be fiscally responsible, and I believe it is possible here in Bismarck. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to let you know we're getting lots of questions from our audience, so there's a lot of interested people in what you have to say. I will move into one of those questions. What is your position regarding the Five South project? Mr. Grossman?
Oh, gosh, ninety seconds. I support the Five South project. I think it's going to be a tremendous boon to the community. I think there are many cities, not only across North Dakota, but the country, that would feel blessed to have an opportunity to have somebody come in and put 150 million dollars into your community. I think it would be a wonderful opportunity to have a new hotel there and attract all those conventions and those visitors that bring a huge amount of money into the community. The economic factor there is something like 1.5, so every million dollars these visitors spend, they're going to spend, we're going to see a turnover of another half a million dollars. So I think it's going to be a tremendous opportunity for the city, and I think in twenty years, we'll be seeing a million dollars in property taxes, and right now, nothing is being done with that property. The city owns it, and so if we put a flower shop, a flower boutique, and a coffee shop, we're not going to generate any tax on that property. So I think it's going to be a great thing. I hear a lot of talk about people excited to move here. My daughter would be one of them, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Oban?
I would also be in support of it. On top of the economic parts that the Commissioner Grossman had mentioned, I would also talk about the quality of life, and my daughter, again, would be happy to go down there. I think that there's a lot of benefits to it, but I think that there's some questions that need to be answered, and I think that we need to make sure that we do it correctly. When we mentioned the TIF funding earlier, you know, a TIF fund that's done correctly is very timely, and it's very specific, and it is very, it's a good investment. And so if that would be something considered for the Five South project, we'd have to ask some questions. But as far as the quality of life and being able to develop a walkable community that, and my son actually took a look on the internet at some of the pictures and images, and he even as a middle schooler thought, man, that would be a place that I would want to hang out with my friends. And it's important. We have 2,500 jobs that we need to fill in Bismarck. We need to keep our young people here, and we need to attract some young people here. So, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Canright?
I really believe it should be a two-part question. I'm not against our downtown. I would love to see downtown Five South grow, the north part of Bismarck, the south. I believe all of us would. However, the second part of the question should be, who pays for the infrastructure, in my opinion? And I don't believe we should use taxpayer money from elsewhere in the city to support infrastructure downtown. I mean, I'm being assessed right now for projects on the north side of town. I believe, Mr. Oban has some good points for saying we should look at the TIF district. There's some other ideas out there, business improvement district or area that we could be looking at, where if the downtown wants this type of investment to take place, maybe they could do something. If they want to increase their own sales tax for their own customers to pay for their improvements, I would be on board. But I don't believe everybody in Bismarck, especially someone like me or my family or my neighbors that don't use a parking ramp downtown, should have to pay for it. I don't think it's fair, and I believe we need to change a policy. Again, these policies were in place in 1979. I was not even born yet. It's time to start moving forward in Bismarck. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Markort?
Being on the City Commission with that vote that came across, I was for the project, but I was against the TIF district and the 35 million dollars, so therefore, my no vote was a no for Five South. Like I said, and I met with the Bismarck Futures, and I told them, I said, "The project is great." I said, "I would love for it to come in there," but I said, basically like Nolan had said, you know, where do we make that distinction between north and south, and why should we give breaks to others? If it's 35 million, I'd be surprised. One thing with, in our construction industry the way it is now, who knows if it could go more than that? We don't know. 35 million was a spot and a number that we had come up with, and who knows what the scope of the project is? I have serious concerns why Five South hasn't, you know, we haven't heard anything from them for a while. And we were supposed to find out a hotel name and everything already, so has the scope of the project changed? But we'll be finding that out shortly. I voted against the TIF district, which was Five South, so I voted against the project.
Thank you. Another question from our audience. As a Commissioner, what will you do to ensure the city will work well or better with our county? Mr. Oban?
Well, this is something, and it goes beyond even the county, but as well as the school district and the park district, and making sure that we all work together. You know, in education, we often talk about collaboration and teaching kids the ethical, the correct way in order to work together. You know, there is always going to be disagreements between Commissioners, between boards, and what we teach them in school is that you work through those disagreements and you see if you can work together, because ultimately, all of those boards working together are serving every one of the Bismarck and surrounding communities. And so how do you do it? You chat, and you talk, and you get together, and you have to come to the conclusion that we're not all going to see things exactly the same way, but being able to embrace that and collaborate and work. I mean, we talked about doing it in school. I would certainly hope that we could get some adults to do that as well.
Thank you.
And, Kim, and I apologize, can you repeat that one more time quickly, please?
Sure. As a Commissioner, what will you do to ensure the city will work well or better with our county?
Well, many things. We need to bring true leadership to the Commission, and I believe it's possible. Again, we need to start building Bismarck together. We're not going to do it by ourselves by making our neighbors angry, by making people across the river angry, or county residents angry, or schools angry. And as part of it, bringing it together is using common sense. It's just a simple, simple task that we could all do as a Commission. I could go on and on for hours here of ways that we could start working together, but we're in this together. Let's work together. There are several areas in there where I think if we listen to each other, if we looked at why people are upset about the Renaissance and look where money is diverted, that's one area. Financial problems are a big area where there's concerns. So we need to start there. We need to start fixing our financial problems, our budgets, start working together, and then there, we could move forward. So there's many areas. I believe it's possible, and I truly believe a change of leadership is necessary to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Markort?
Thank you, Kim. As a Commissioner, that is my portfolio is Intergovernmental Communications Committee, I should say. We've had one meeting. We're having another one, I do believe, on May 26th, and I've reached out to the other Commissioners to pull an agenda together. And while I was on the school district as Board President twice and eight years there, I agree with Mr. Oban. That's something that we need to do, and I'm bringing some of that information and how we work together on the school district for the City Commission. So, you know, we're already doing that, Sean, and, you know, we've got eight meetings scheduled roughly throughout the years. As long as I get reelected, we'll be able to handle out the rest of them. But that's one of the main things, and I've always been a strong proponent of it, even the school district, is communication. We need communication between other Commissions. We need it between our citizens, and we need to make sure that we listen to them.
Thank you. And Mr. Grossman?
It's something you have to work at constantly, and I have a good, I think, collegial relationship with the County Commission. I think it's respectful. I think we often have some good exchange of ideas from time to time. A City Commissioner might meet with a County Commissioner, and I think it's something our citizens have a right to expect. I look at one example is our Combined Communications Center that Bismarck shares that center with Burley County, and then we recently pushed to include Mandan in it, and that is one of my portfolios in public safety, and I was a driving force in bringing Mandan on board with that. And the whole idea was to have that kind of cooperation, improve our communications, improve our ability to respond to offenses that may travel across the river. I'm happy to say I was elected the first president of the Board of Directors of that UNO organization, so I think we've got a good start, and we can work on more.
Thank you. Again, we invite our in-house audience to submit questions using the index cards provided, and viewers may call (355) 1312, or send a text to BMLWV to (22333) during our forum tonight on Thursday, May 12th. I'll move on to the next question then from our audience. This will start with Mr. Canright. Do you support changing Main Avenue into a two-lane road, and why?
Not at this time. The mayor says we're out of money. We have many, many road projects. Changing Main is going to cost money. We have to restripe it. We're going to have to re-sign areas. It costs money, and it doesn't matter if it's $10 or $10 million. It's money out of the taxpayer budget where we have many other projects that are supposed to be a priority. So I've been driving Main, not only in an emergency vehicle for years, but also in my personal vehicle. I have not had an issue on Main Street. Nobody in my family has had an issue. Now, I know there has been. I know recently, somebody had a mirror taken off a vehicle, and that was challenged from municipal court and sent to district court, and it was overturned. Well, maybe we should, as a city, challenge that and take it up to the Supreme Court level, because laws are laws. You cannot open your door into traffic. But instead of changing that and challenging it, let's not redo the whole street and spend more money. So at this point, I would be against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Markort?
Again, as City Commissioner, I voted against that. One of the reasons being why is I think we needed to get more input from the public, but it is a demonstration project, or supposedly. If you look at one of the, I can't remember which board meeting it was, before the mayor had called roll call, he said Main Street will not look the same as it is currently. That got me concerned, that it's more than just a demonstration project. As a demonstration project, you know, we're not narrowing Main. We're making it from a four to three, so your parking on each side is going to be about 10 feet. We already have some roads like that in the city. They work well. I don't know for sure if it's going to work well where it's at. Like Mr. Canright said, it costs a lot of money to restripe, even for a demonstration project, about $53,000, something like that. And that's something that we need to go forward with and look at. Are we just spending money to spend money? I voted against it. I think we need more input, but that's why it's a demonstration project.
Thank you. Mr. Grossman?
First, I want to say I've never, ever, my whole time in the Commission, spent money just to spend money. $53,000 is a lot of money, but I think it's worth looking at. We had some experts that came in, our consultants, that studied our whole downtown and said, "This is what you need to do." We've had our traffic engineering say, "This is what you need to do. It's worked well in other areas. We'll see." I insisted that it be a demonstration project only, so we can change it back if it doesn't work. If we don't try it, we're never going to know whether it's an improvement, but we expect there'll be some huge benefits, again, to quality life downtown and sort of to that walkability. So I think it's something well worth considering, and we'll see how the citizens like it, and we won't move forward on a permanent basis if the majority of our citizens don't like it.
Thank you. Mr. Oban?
Hi. When I owned String Bean on Main Street, we actually had two people come in and say that their front door had been knocked off clean as they were getting out of their car on Main Street. So I do have a little of experience of it actually happening. You know, one of my platforms would be, one, for safety, and if it's a safety thing, then it should be something to look at. I also would like and encourage people to not necessarily make decisions based on emotion, but instead, take a look at what the experts are saying and take a look at the research, and if it makes sense and the citizens are behind it, then we'll do it. But you're not going to know that until you try it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Our next question was developed by the League, but again, we've had many audience people interested in it. What should Bismarck do to manage growth and to minimize urban sprawl? Mr. Markort?
Well, what we're currently doing is we're working on a few high-density projects to help with some of that urban sprawl. It's a tough question, because you've got people that want to be able to live just on the outskirts of Bismarck and have lot sizes what they want. So us, as a City Commission, and as far as planning and zoning, need to look at how those developments are going to look like. You know, one thing with downtown is it, you know, basically, the infrastructure is in place, so, you know, high density would work down there. We do have different high-density areas on the outskirts. Some of them are placed in areas where I kind of question why it was because we've had a few of them come before the city commission table where if you bought a house and then an office in your backyard, you've got an office complex. And that originally, that's not how it was zoned. So, we have some issues with some zoning, but that's how we're working with it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Grossman?
Thank you. Again, one of those issues we have to wrestle with regularly. I agree with Commissioner Markort. We've done some things with the density, but I also think people need to be able, free to choose. Do they want a larger lot? Do they want a smaller lot? And so, you might want some developments that have more density and others that don't. I think, to some extent, our development maybe has gotten away from us. On the other hand, there's been the demand. The commission recently supported a new development on North Washington, but it's because there are probably 150 new lots there, and I think homeowners will want to live there. And so, I think we kind of have to be responsive to that, but I think we have to be careful to not have these pockets, start extending out and then leave these donuts as Commissioner asked, refers to. He doesn't like those donuts much, and so, we're getting those brought into the city. So, I think it's something we have to constantly pay attention to and probably take a more active hand as a, as a city commission to ensure more orderly growth.
Thank you. Mr. Oban?
You know, I am a 43-year-old person living, I live on the outskirts of Bismarck. You know, I certainly would have, you know, little interest in living downtown, but I do recognize the fact that we have to give folks choice. And when we continue to go, and I just talked to a gentleman yesterday that talked about some of the development that he lives up in north and how if he didn't have a map of how to get to his house, he'd have a difficulty finding his place because some of that development has kind of gotten all over the place. So, we do need to have some sort of systematic method in order to keep it, you know, orderly so people can get around. I think that we have to provide choice. I think that as soon as I decide that the way that I live is the way that everybody should live, it's not going to work. Everybody has that choice, and I've had young people that told me, meeting the Young Professional Group, that they, they're interested in living downtown. I don't have interest in living downtown, but we need to provide choice. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Canright?
Well, thank you. It comes back to common sense. One expert says you need more downtown urban area. Talked to another person, they'll say, you're expanding. We've got to grow more up north. So, it comes back to us and using common sense, what works for Bismarck? Because what works for Bismarck may not be the best thing that works for Phoenix, that works for Portland. We're different, and so, we have to find out what works for us. Now, I'm very concerned with some of the units going in that are proposed to go in, I should say downtown. It's very expensive. We don't have any tech jobs downtowns, or downtown like many other cities do. We don't have a lot of industry, so it's very expensive. It would be exciting to see people live there, but I'm concerned, where are they going to pay the rent? We have to provide the jobs first. Many people have moved out of Bismarck because they wanted large yards. So, as a commission, we have to take this all into perspective, and we have to use a common sense decision, and we have to do what's best for Bismarck. We've got to be very careful to do what other people are telling us to do because it worked somewhere 1,700 miles away.
Okay. We'll move on to the next question. As the city expands, public safety issues are continuing to grow. What ideas do you have for addressing this issue? Mr. Markort?
Did I have the first one last time? Not?
You did. I will move on to Mr. Grossman then.
Oh, God.
You know what? I don't mind answering, but just to be fair.
This isn't coming from my time, this hustle, is it?
No, it's not.
You know, I, thank you. That's my portfolio. I talk to the chief almost on a daily basis whether or not he wants to. We're talking about a lot of things. You know, one of the things we talked about recently was two persons responding to a vehicle, that it, it makes more sense to have one vehicle arriving with two officers than having two separate vehicles. They can deal with that situation with having those officers. I think it's going to unfortunately require more resources. Again, something Chief Donlin asks for every year, but it's always a balancing issue as I also chair the budget committee, finding those dollars. Unfortunately, public safety, which is primarily fire and police, takes up almost a majority of our property tax dollars for the, for the most part. So, we're really, those resources are coming from something else, but as I watch some of the violent crimes increases, as people are telling me, I'm not having enough patrols in my neighborhood, I think we're looking forward to probably some real changes in public safety in the near future, and that will take more resources and not just police officers, but firefighters because they have to be able to respond timely to those fires. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Safety is important to me and certainly, safety of our kids. And so, one of the issues that came up at our, at our school just in the last year was an ordinance concern, talking about what we could put out in the road in order to slow traffic as kids were trying to cross the street. And the issue was, is that we were told once by the school, by the city, that we could use these little green guys with the flag to slow down traffic. We were given the approval, and then later on, we were told we couldn't use those, and we had to use what was approved by the ordinance. Now, I completely, I mean, I'd be interested in following all of the rules. I would like the city to be consistent when they're carrying those things out, and it's okay to take a look at that ordinance to say, for the safety of our kids, maybe we need to take a look at what else we could be doing. I also just recently took a ride along with a police officer, and he told me, as we're driving around the city and taking a look at the map, he said, there's some neighborhoods that he's never even driven through, and it's just because of the number of police officers. You know, if there's a call, they certainly respond, and I, after driving with them, I feel incredibly safe because they are some stand-up guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Canright?
As a former police officer of 11 years, I'm deeply concerned where our public safety's going. I believe we're too reactive in our community. I believe we follow other communities' footsteps. We recently have a burn building that was passed, which is great. I am very happy because it was well-needed. But we're decades behind other cities. Fargo's had there since 1969. We've been sending firefighters over to Mandan to train. We are the capital city. We need to set the standard and excellence in public safety, and we have not been doing that. We've had three officer-involved shootings in the last several months. We've had two homicides. I would say it's safe to say, so far this year, violent crime is up. The stats are out there. When I was with the PD, I was very concerned with our officers. I put an input form in years ago saying, we need to put a perimeter up around the police department because someone threatened to kill me and my family. I was told there was no money, but then we got bike lanes in Bismarck. I'm very concerned with our public safety. I will take it seriously, and there will be no bigger supporter for our public safety than I will be. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, I'll answer it, Kim.
Okay.
And I would, you know, agree with Peron. You know, that's one thing that all of us sitting up here and all of us at the commission table, including the mayor, is, is public safety is, is by first and foremost, number one, and that's something that we struggle with all the time with on the finance side, like Commissioner Grossman had, had mentioned, and to find those numbers. You know, that goes back to, you know, some of the TIP district stuff or some of the argument behind that. But all in all, it's a financial issue that we need to overcome and be able to supply more officers in the fire department. I, you know, talked to the fire department also and did my ride along, and I feel very safe with the officers that we have here. Are they stretched thin? Yes, they are stretched very thin. We are working on that to try and get more officers, officers on staff because basically, when you, when we visit or I visit with the citizens, that's their main concern is safety. So, I try and bring that back to the table and do what we can as far as financially to be able to support those officers that are already on duty and hopefully get more.
Thank you. I have another audience question. What would your vision be to grow arts and culture, especially in downtown? Mr. Oban?
You know, I am a lifelong musician. I'm a member of the Dakota West Art Council. I completely appreciate and understand the value of what arts can bring to a community. You talk about the color, you talk about young people that are going to want to go down. I was pleased that the city commission just passed the mural art downtown. That's just going to breathe life into those alleys. I think that, you know, if we can get more music downtown, if we can get more art downtown, if we can get more involvement all over with arts. As the fine arts coordinator, I realize that, or as a musician, first of all, I realize that our community is not necessarily as supportive as it could be, and I think part of that starts with our kids. And so, in the school district, we get our kids involved in all types of fine arts activities, all through elementary and middle school and high school. It serves a purpose in our community, and there is enjoyment, and there's an economic benefit to it as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
If money only grew on trees, we could have everything here in Bismarck. We really could. We're broke right now, and we need to find out where we want to spend our money. Right now, the mayor says we need a lot of money for roads, and I'm looking at the list right now, and we do. I'm not against arts. It's great. There's several things that I would love to see in Bismarck. Right now, we've had a competitor city in our town, or in our state, just bring in $16 million over a four-day event from a concert. So, there's several things we could do to enhance our culture and bring more people in downtown, which would be great, but, but right now, I'm very concerned with the financial situation. So, here's what I would do, as I've been doing right now on the campaign trail. I would get out and talk to people. What do you want in our community? Because it's not ultimately my decision, I'm representing you. Is arts what you want? Do we want to see this before we pay for a new road or resurface? Let me know. But it's ultimately up to our community what we want, and whoever it may be that gets in to sit, they will have to make the decision, and they should be listening to the public. So, I will represent what the public wants. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I'm going to start painting. Second of all, I'm for the, for the arts, and I do believe that the projects that we have available right now are not being, there's no city money being spent on those. I think the Dakota West Arts Council, I do believe, is, or, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, is that the group that handles Dakota West Arts Council, right? You know, they're putting up everything in to clean the wall, and so, there is no city money that's going towards that. You know, I played trumpet, and I was in all of our courses, stuff like that. When we hired, on this school district, when we hired Mr. Oban to be in the position that he's in right now, that was one thing that, his passion for that, we knew that the kids were going to get a strong educational background on that. And I do appreciate him helping out our, because we were talking about cutting it at one time, and so, we had our teachers teach those art program, and he did a good job with that. So, I'm for the arts. There's no money, city money for those projects. They're self-funded.
All right, thank you.
First, I want to say I don't disagree with anything Mr. Oban said. I really think we could use more money in the arts, but I also agree with Mr. Canright on that. I want to disagree with the fact we're broke. We're not broke. The mayor rolled out a plan, and with all due respect, I don't agree that it's that dire. I've never heard the finance director say we're broke. I spend 60 hours of annual leave every single year with the budget, and I can tell you we're not broke. I wouldn't be running for reelection if we're broke because that job is difficult enough when we have some money. So, I have to say, I love Eileen Walsh. She comes to us every year, wants money. I think we've opted to around 70 or 75,000. I think we can do better, but I also think we spend about the same amount, given it to the police department to deal with homeless issues. And so, it kind of comes down to some of those choices, and in that regard, I kind of agree with Mr. Canright. So, if the community has to get behind it and say, that's how we want our tax dollars spent, and then I could get behind it, but in the meantime, it's kind of all about balance.
All right, thank you. And thank you for bringing up the topic of homelessness because that is something that, a question that League has generated. What should be done to address homelessness in Bismarck?
Very good topic. I've dealt with it personally for years. A lot of people don't realize, if you walk through several of our parks and walk in the trees, there's people sleeping in them. Try to find them homes when it's 40 below outside and get them off the road. It's very difficult. We need to have a better partnership with our, with our private sector out there, some of our nonprofits, because we need it. The demand is growing in Bismarck. We have a homeless need, and not only that, what's growing is mental health issues out there and detox issues. We need to seriously look down and make this a priority because it's growing. Those of you that drive on State Street, look what you see off the interstate a lot of time. There are homeless people looking for rides, looking for money, panhandling, if you want to call it, but we've all seen it. We've seen it in the parks, and if you haven't seen it, there's many, many homeless people in our community, and the problem's not going away. So, what we need to do is we need to start working with our partners out there, our nonprofits, and make sure we have a plan in place where people have somewhere to go, especially in the wintertime. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Markort?
I'd agree with Nolan. We have to, you know, visit with our nonprofits, but we often have to visit with our citizens. You know, a lot of these, we don't have enough places for some of these people. Some of them are being underutilized. We need to get together and visit with those nonprofits, and maybe some of them are doubling up. Maybe some of them need to specialize in, you know, in a different area and one, you know, in another area and one in a different one. Our biggest thing is we just don't have enough space. You know, Mr. Canright had talked about a detox. You know, sometimes our, you know, the police department picks them up and our hospital ERs are full. We need to take a look, take a serious look at what do we do with those people till they get better. You know, mental health issues. We need a spot to be able to educate or help those people get better. We don't have that. The trouble is, in Bismarck, a lot of it is sometimes it's not in my backyard, but where? We need to find where.
Thank you. Mr. Grossman?
It is an issue, and it's swept under the carpet unfortunately, and it's often because it's a money issue. Nobody wants to deal with it. Williston wanted us to handle the issue during the boom. They wanted to send everybody to Bismarck, and we weren't able to do that. We can do more, and a lot of that starts with the, with the nonprofit. A lot of it starts with the programming. We recently had a decision with the Ruth Meyers. I think that would have been helpful, but unfortunately, the neighborhood didn't want that operation there at that time, and the city commission frankly had no choice but really to support that. So, I think it eventually is going to take more city resources, but again, it's going to be the tolerance of the taxpayers because all of us know we have this obligation to take care of the homeless, but nobody wants to pay for it. So, I take my marching orders from the taxpayers, and so, as a city commissioner, I'm going to have to hear from the taxpayers that they want to dedicate more resources, and then I'm willing and able to do that. And Mr. Canright is absolutely right when he referred to the mental health problem. It's becoming a law enforcement problem, so.
Thank you. Mr. Oban?
And the mental health and the homeless issue has hit the school district as well, and we see it each and every day. And it puts us in a difficult position in the school system, and I think even chatting with the police officer about some of the things that we can agree on is that, you know, going into education, we were not educated to deal with mental health and to deal with homelessness, and I think some of the police department feels the same way. You know, this is not what, what we were trained to do. We need to build the relationship and collaborate again with those nonprofits to find a place for those folks to go and to find a better system, and in doing that, it's going to address the safety thing that we've talked about because if we have a better system in place, police officers are going to be more free to be able to patrol those neighborhoods that they might not be able to get to now. So, I think that all of that and working together and collaboration, and I would go back to something that Mr. Canright brought up earlier is that, you know, these relationships could have been built already, and they could be stronger, and so, the commission needs some strong leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. I have another audience question for you. Would you support efforts to prohibit any discrimination based on sexual orientation and/or gender identity? Mr. Markort?
No. We already have, I don't believe in discriminating against anyone, first and foremost. I mean, we all have a right to be able to work and work freely in our so-called chosen position that we have, so I would not support that.
Thank you. Mr. Grossman?
I don't believe in discrimination, but if you talk about passing any city ordinance, I'm concerned. The other communities like Grand Forks that have ordinances, they have housing, and so they have a real interest that they can enforce, housing laws. In our particular situation, we don't have city housing. And so I think my concern would be it would become an employment issue. There's already substantial federal laws that address that particular area that could deal with it. And I'm not sure the taxpayers, again, would want to foot the bill to deal with discrimination in employees. I certainly favor any ordinance that would ban discrimination by the city and its employment, but I think most of these are so broad that what they do is impose a burden on the city to regulate any kind of discrimination by any kind of employer or in housing. And again, since we don't have the housing, I don't feel that it's needed at this particular time. But I can't emphasize enough, I don't support any form of discrimination regardless of sex or gender.
Thank you. Mr. O'Ban?
And in school, we teach our kids to not discriminate, to treat everybody equally and treat everybody fairly. If this is coming up for discussion, then I would have to ask the question, it must be happening. It must be going on. And so it certainly would be more debate. And as far as, you know, getting to the point of the ordinance, that would be something to discuss. But the fact that it's being brought up, it would be certainly something that needs to be talked about. You know, we have a state policy or a state law talking about a bullying policy that we implemented all of our schools, that was talked about in the school board debate earlier today. And it discusses all of those things. If we're carrying that out in schools, not sure that we shouldn't be carrying that out as a society.
Thank you.
Well, I come from a profession where you're going to discriminate, obviously. You'd be looked upon a lot differently, and I probably wouldn't have been employed too long if I was using any type of discrimination. Without hearing an argument or hearing from the public, it's, I want to hear what is going on. I'm one of those people where I want to represent our community. We have lots of laws on the books. Our century code's huge, our municipal ordinances are huge. I'm not in the business just to put laws on the books, just to have them. There has to be a purpose behind it. And it's hard to, without hearing an argument from the public, which is who we would represent, it's hard to answer that question. Do I believe in discrimination? Absolutely not. But I would like to hear what's driving this question. That's why I've been out in the community. That's why I've held town halls, is to hear these sides where they have ample time to get their point across, and I have ample time to address the question properly. And that's why I'm hosting another one here next week. But I'm not in favor of just putting laws on the books or ordinances just to do it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. What is your position on requiring neighborhood parks and open spaces in new developments? Mr. Grossman?
How can this be my time already? Okay. Well, I supported it. We passed an ordinance led largely by Commissioner Asfig. I think we're seeing it start to work. I think it's going to be a tremendous sort of gift to the city of Bismarck to have these kinds of things in your neighborhood, not have to go to Surtoma. I'm finding our developers are being cooperative in setting this property aside. I think it's going to be affordable. We put some restrictions in place so that we, together as the city commission and as the Bismarck kind of park board, could make sure that we have some control over the costs and those assessments on the neighborhood. I primarily support something that's limited to the new neighborhood so that when you move into a neighborhood and the builder developer sells you your lot, you know what those charges are going to be. And so we're not going outside that area and adding additional charges on. So I fully support that, and it's one of the things that I'm probably the most pleased with that this commission has done. And I wish I could say in this instance, well, this instance only, that I was Commissioner Asfig and had actually been the one to bring it forth.
Thank you. Mr. O'Ban?
I would completely support it as well. As a strong advocate for quality of life and families and kids, this is for families and kids. They don't have to drive all the way across town to find green space. They can find it in their own neighborhood, and I think that it's just good business. Thanks.
Thank you.
I think it's a great thing, and I don't believe there's anybody against having parks or green zones. I think it's great. I think what it comes down to is money. It's very expensive. Special assessments are very high. They're great to have. And with my minute here, I'm going to go back to, that's why it's very important that we hit the reset button when we start talking about TIF and Renaissance. I'm looking at a tax statement from 2015 from downtown, and I won't name the business, but what was supposed to go to the Park District was $16,000. Remember, this is last year. What the Park District received was $5,944. So I want parks. My children want parks. I'm sure your children want parks. It's great. So what I want to see is bring leadership where we hit the reset button, we come back to the drawing board. What is it that we want? Let's build Bismarck together, and let's build these great parks. But again, we don't have a money tree. Nothing's free. So it comes down to financially, what you as taxpayers, where do we want our money going? What are we willing to pay for? And I'm willing to listen to that. So are parks great? Absolutely. I love them, and I love taking my children to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a program that I would support. You know, I have the same concerns as Nolan does as far as some of the monies behind it. One thing that, you know, that we need to make sure that we do is we need to visit with our developers. And I know that we try and do a good job with that. And to make sure we have that give and take. I mean, we need to take a look at the project as a whole, as far as their development. If there's a park that's somewhat close by, you know, and take a look. But that's Parks and Rec, to handle that and to visit with that. I know we have the ordinance for that or the program. But I think we need to have that open communication, again, with our citizens, with our developers to keep moving forward. I would agree, it's something that, in a neighborhood, you want a school and a park close by, sometimes it's both the same.
All right, thank you. We have an audience member who is interested in knowing your position on Quiet Rail. Mr. O'Ban?
My position on Quiet Rail? I've heard lots of people talk about how the railroads and actually growing up back when, many, many years ago, when we lived on Sunset Place. I mean, the sound of the rails is loud, woke you up at night. The Quiet Rails downtown in particular, it would certainly support a walkable community. But if we're going to talk about the way that it's funded, that's a different question in regards to the TIF funding. You know, the fact that that, and maybe I'll touch on it now, you know, again, I don't want to say that TIF funding is a wrong way of doing things, but I do have questions about how the current TIF, having started in 1979, is still currently in place. Quiet Rails was certainly not the project they planned to do when they started the TIF in 1979. And so it's something that we have to take a look at. As soon as these projects get done, if they are on the TIF and we can't stop the TIF now that it's in place, and I certainly have not been in the commission to vote so far, but, you know, after those things get off the books, then we need to take care of the TIF.
All right, thank you.
Again, and TIF and money, again, it's almost like we're beating a dead horse, but we're going back to this. It's rearing its head again. And I look at it this way. I was on the radio here not too long ago when I said I was concerned about special assessments. And someone else called in afterwards and said, people should know what they're getting into before they buy. Well, that railroad has been there a very long time. We could all agree on that. I believe before Bismarck was established as a city, the railroad was there. So we have to know what we're getting into. Now, going into the Quiet Rail, if certain businesses are going to benefit from it, then it goes back to my ideas where we have to hit the reset button and maybe look at a business improvement district. Because Quiet Rail was voted down by our public not once, but twice. And I'm a person that I've been saying, I want to represent the public. So the public turned it down, so I would have to say no to it. However, there's other options. We need to go back to the drawing board. If they want to spend a little bit more downtown, and they want it, I'm not opposed to them having it. I'm not against our downtown. I love it. But we need to go back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Markwart?
And that's one thing in a debate like this, sometimes your answers are said by some of the other individuals in front of you. So thanks, Nolan, for bringing that up. If I would have been on the city commission at the time, and the citizens voted against it, I would have voted against it myself. That's one thing that I have been consistent with. The citizens that I visit with, and keep in mind, I've been in Bismarck since 1989, but I've had multiple jobs, and I work at a large hardware store. So I see people all over the place, and I visit with them, and they say, why in the heck did they go ahead and go through with this? I said, I wasn't on at the time, but I said, if the citizens has voted against it and they had their voice, I would have voted against it. You know, the commission at the time used TIF, therefore that's, you know, what Nolan had brought up. I do believe we need to take a look at a business improvement district in our area.
Thank you. And Mr. Grossman?
Well, I have supported it. There's two schools of thought, and I understand those of my opponents. I disagree. Some, I sometimes think if something's wrong, you have to fix it later, and you can't just say, well, these people bought this property, moved here. We have hospitals located there. We have a big, large hotel that has a lot of visitors located there. We have, I think, the Patterson Place, and some young woman living there calls me about once a week and holds the phone while the rail train goes by. And so she's really upset. I don't know why she doesn't call the mayor or Mr. Markwart. But I, and we've scaled it down so it's about half the size of that project. I took a lot of input as a commissioner. Yes, I know the people voted it down once. I don't recall the first time. It must have been before my time. But I took into consideration that I think the prevailing thought in the community had changed, and I think the support is there to have it done. And I think most people feel that it's a public obligation and that we should have gone ahead with it at that cost. But I can understand how some would disagree.
All right, thank you. Candidates, I appreciate your being here tonight. I will now offer you each one minute to provide a closing comment. We will start with Mr. Canright.
Well, thank you. What I want you to do, Bismarck residents, we have a big decision to make here in about a month. I want you to go home, and I want you to talk to your neighbors and your family, your coworkers, and have a serious discussion with them. Do you feel safer today in Bismarck than you did eight years ago? And have that discussion. And depending the outcome of that discussion, if you feel we should improve our public safety, then you need to get ahold of me. There's many areas we need to improve. I do not want to be the reactive city. I want to be a proactive city. Public safety will be my priority. It is very expensive, and that goes back into my other part where we need to address our revenue problem. Okay? Once this is all addressed, we could really start moving forward. I believe I am that person that can move us forward, and we will get there. And I would appreciate your vote here in a month. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Markwart?
Thank you, Kim. I've been on the city commission for two years. I filled Mr. Mayor Seminary's spot. There's a lot of things that I've done that I've started, and I want to be able to finish. You talk about leadership. I've had that leadership in the past with the school district. I was board president for two years, vice president for two years, out of the eight. There's a lot of things as far as communication, even between the Home Builders Association or builders, and that communication with those departments. It is starting to slowly get better, but there's still a lot of improvement that we need to do to move forward. I've held those department heads accountable. I think that sometimes we forget who we work for. Communication is a key factor. We lose that, and then we lose the trust of some of the citizens. I will not let that happen. To be a city commissioner, you do need to be open to new ideas and to listen to both sides and make decisions from that input. I have done that, and I will continue. Thank you very much.
Mr. Grossman?
Our citizens know my commitment, skills, and dedication in making Bismarck better. I have a reputation for listening and considering all sides of an issue. As your finance commissioner, I'm committed to prudent and resourceful management of your tax dollars to provide that necessary level of services in an affordable manner. As the public safety commissioner, I've engaged with the police and fire department on a regular basis and intend to ensure that we provide the highest level of public safety. I'm going to say my decisions are not perfect, and I try to learn from my mistakes. I try to be informed. I try to listen and make good decisions.